Good evening. Welcome to the Davie County Planning Department meeting for the month of March 21, which is now called Order. First order of business is, we have a couple Board members who need to be sworn in. Alan Miller and Tammy Taylor, would you please repeat after me? Don't forget to use your microphones. Please place your hand on the Holy Bible. Sure. Say, "I pronounce your name."
I, Tammy Taylor.
I, Alan Miller.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office
The duties of my office.
As Planning Board Member.
As Planning Board Member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. All right. Next order of business is to approve the minutes of our last meeting. I hope that you've had a chance to look over those. I move to approve as written.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve as written. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, last meeting, raise your right hand. Okay. At this point in the evening, there's a time for anyone to make a public comment about any issue that is not on our agenda. The only issue on the agenda is the rezoning of the property at Armsworthy Lane, Armsworthy Road. So if it's something other than that, that you need to bring before the Board. Okay? Seeing none, we'll move. Yes, yes, please. Yep, come forward.
Good evening Chairman Allen and other members of the Board. I'm Dr. Bobby Grigsby. I'll remind you, I was the guy that spoke to you last month that built the photo of Veltic Cell in 1977. I wanted to thank you for your patience and your long suffering and the generosity of your time last week, last month rather, as we explored the zoning ordinances and the rezoning of the Junction Road and Ratliff Road properties. I want to thank you for taking the position to not approve of the rezoning of those properties and thereby preserving the integrity of the comprehensive plan. Now that you've been tasked with reevaluating the ordinances relative to the development of industrial solar, I was just going to remind you of a couple of my main points. The decommissioning costs are typically overestimating the value of salvage, particularly the panels, therefore causing decommissioning process to appear fully funded. Our current ordinance requires the developer to supply the cost estimate. There's a reason why banks hire the appraiser and not the borrower. Because we're getting all of our information from the very industry that is developing the projects, they are motivated to present it in the best possible light. Convincing us that decommissioning costs can be covered by salvage value and then telling us that we don't need to have any form of bond in place is risky business. And looking back through the last five projects that have been proposed or approved, this seems to be what is happening or implied. So as a physician, this is like when I have a pharmaceutical rep come and tell me that their new drug is the best thing since sliced bread. And if I don't take the time to review the literature myself, but just take their word for it. We should have a list of qualified engineers that can be used so that we have some assurances that the numbers are fair. We should consider what is allowed in salvage value at all. Solar panels are a huge unknown due to the rapidly changing technology. The last three projects that I reviewed valued the panels anywhere from $4 to $17, but multiple studies do show that the panels, by the time of removal, will likely have no value at all, kind of like that iPhone four that I'm still holding on to. Our current ordinance requires a guarantee for the estimated cost of decommissioning less any salvage value. And looking back over the last projects approved in the county, either no cost breakdown was provided, or the estimated salvage value always exceeded the decommissioning cost. Studies have shown that an average decommissioning cost to be over $79,000 per megawatt, plus reclaiming the land back to farm use at 160 acres, 1,060 acres per acre. Of the last five projects, two had no breakdown and three were upside down, just like a car loan. So the problem is not the types of guarantees required by the ordinance, but the numbers we are using to determine their need. The bigger the project gets in acres and megawatts, the more off these numbers become. So thank you for your willingness to serve in this role and tackle these issues. In an effort not to kill too many renewable trees, I'm going to send you the links to the studies I referenced via email. Thank you again.
Thank you. Can I, I just want to remind you too, that, and thank you for keeping it short, we're going to really keep it tight tonight on the time limit, so three minutes please.
Got it.
Thank you.
I'm Bonnie, Dr. Bonnie Grigsby. I just want to also thank you very much for serving our county, and we especially appreciate your diligent study and preparation at the last solar discussion. It was clearly reflected that in your many good and detailed questions that you asked. In addressing the solar ordinance, my theme tonight will be to encourage language where the county hires qualified professionals for oversight of solar generating facilities and the solar developers required to pay for it. Let's draw back for a minute and look at this from the thousand-foot view. We don't do a study or talk to experts to determine that we can go to Rich Park on Saturday and have fun with our family. However, we're given many studies and experts to assure us that solar panels, water, and soil will be safe. This has caused bystander citizens in various parts of our county to now question, are we really safe? Why has the solar industry spent so much time and millions of dollars to reassure us if there's really nothing to it? It seems prudent to have greater oversight of solar plants to reassure Davie County their interests are being considered and protected by adding ordinance language requiring unbiased experts chosen by the county to test and validate. This would be paid with money set aside annually from the solar company, not county expense. I'll give one example and then supply a list. Solar company proposal will name the specific panel, call it XYZ. Because panels are a major expense, it's not uncommon in business economics to shop for the best deal. Logically and according to people in the industry, solar companies will shop for best price, which may or may not be the quality and content of panel XYZ. We'd like to suggest that the language of the ordinance require that the solar company specify the exact manufacturer and model of panels being installed and disclose 100% of the contents of those panels. A county hired expert could verify compliance throughout installation, as well as inspect annually that there are no substitutions or replacements without county approval as they wear out or are damaged in a storm. If noncompliant, a fine or cancel. In addition, the solar company would be required to name the exact facility where the panels will be disposed and required to submit an annual update to the county verifying waste management arrangements. In the future, there may be state laws mandating recycling of panels versus disposing in landfills, plus not all landfills will take toxic components. Our county chosen experts could oversee reviews and compliance in all these areas, doing what you as a county board always strive to do, and that is look out for the best interests of Davie County. Thank you again for your valuable personal time in addressing the solar ordinance. Mr. Chairman, may I approach with the one-page handout?
Yes, if you want to just give it to Ms. Flight.
Hello. My name is Nick Slagic. I was here last month. And one of the things that I heard in the meeting when the presentation was done was that the land will be ready to be farmed right after the removal of the panels takes place. I said, "That's interesting." So I personally went, employing the principle of just manage by walking around. I walked around the nearest solar site that I could find and took a look at it. It had severe erosion and it had five-inch-plus rock dumped into places and smoothed over. So they took Rich Farmland and peppered it with rock. That is another kind of thing that will happen, and if you're going to consider any universal ideas, I'd suggest that every time you use some fundamental principles like landowner influences, the claims, whether or not they can be true or not, and finally, what kind of damages will occur to the neighbors. Now, it's not site damage that I'm talking about, it's the destruction of the farmland. You can't go planting when you got rock that's five inches in the ground. So my suggestion would be, if you get down the road trying to establish a uniform set of characteristics, always, always do a site visit first and make determinations as to which general characteristics matter. In my case, a site visit would confirm that land upstream from me is a bolt and any rain's going to come down and wash me away. And everybody else could have a similar problem, or not so much a similar problem. Anyway, using the principle of just going to the site before you would approve anything is my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right, thank you. Now for the zoning map amendment, Mr. Meadwell, you want to present that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you nod, you have zoning map amendment 2021-01. This is a request to rezon 42.36 acres of a portion of a 75.89 acre tract from residential 20 quality design overlay to residential R12 quality design overlay. The property is located at the corner of Armsworthy Road and US Highway 158 and is as addressed as 238 Armsworthy Road, and the property is further described as Davie County Tax Parcel E788, and the request comes to you by Trent Adams Properties. Included in your agenda packages, you have a current zoning map of the property. The property is outlined in red. The portion that is being rezoned is on the western side of Armsworthy Road. Also, in your package, you see an aerial photograph. The property currently is vacant, being used as residential farm purposes. The thing I'd like to talk about with you now is how the Davie County Land Development Plan addresses this piece of property. It's currently in an area that is designated as commercial mixed use. If the Board recalls, back in 2019, December of 2019, we finished up a process that took about 18 months of updating our land use and comprehensive plan, and this is as a result of that, one of these designated areas that was changed or reclassified to this commercial mixed use. Also, maps in your package show the growth management of this area. This area is designated as a primary growth area. The primary growth area, these are properties that are located in an area that is designated to be a high-growth area and that they are generally located along major urban transportation corridors. It includes areas that are likely to have access to urban infrastructure services such as water and sewer within the foreseeable future. The primary growth areas predominantly are mixed uses that will include residential and commercial development. Higher urban-type density levels can be anticipated in these areas. As I mentioned too, the commercial mixed areas, this area is defined as a, commercial activities include shopping, retail services, offices, and other commercial businesses, along with other intensive land uses compatible with commercial businesses, including medium-to-high-density residential, civic, or light industrial uses, and where roads, water, and sewer can support those activities. This comes to the Board as a general use rezoning. So what this means is that all those possible uses that are allowed within the R12 zoning district should be considered in your deliberation. The planning Board may approve, or deny, or defer the request for additional consideration. The Board should consider following and making its recommendations. The property's potential as a residential use, the property's location along a major arterial. If the rezoning is approved, any new structure or subdivision will still have to go through our TRC process for compliance with zoning standards and subdivision standards. Whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with the purposes, goals, objectives, and policies of adopted plans for the areas, and whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with the overall character of existing development and the immediate rescinding of the subject property. The Board should consider one of the following actions, either one, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve; two, move that a following statement be adopted in support of a denial; or three, a motion to defer the amendment for additional consideration. I'll be more than glad to answer any questions the Board may have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the Board?
Do I need to separate the fours and the againsts?
I think, I think I would. I think I would. I know the applicant is here, you may want to let him speak first.
All right. If the applicant would like to open this discussion up, comment section up, you're welcome to do that at the time.
My name's Trent Adams, and the one development I've done in Davie is Kinderton Village, which probably started 20 years ago. I think Wendy was a help out there. We've probably done 20 or 30 other neighborhoods in the triad. So our, I guess, philosophy is to create a neighborhood feel first, and then we're going to develop it and maintain it, and like at Kinderton, I've been out there for 20 years. So that's an example of what we do. We think Armsworthy is a good location. People now want to come out of town and have a little more land than they've had inside the city. And we're going to use Howard or Encompass and Nikki Mills as our engineer and our surveyor. Do y'all have any questions?
Any questions?
What do you intend to do, Trent?
Well, our plan is, we've looked at it two different ways. We've looked at it as doing all single-family, and then we've looked at all single-family, and then we've also looked at it, we did some in Kinderton, we did some duplexes, and they seem to work for the 55-year-old and older seem to be, feel a security level if there's somebody attached to them. And so we would look at either doing all single-family or a combination of maybe a third duplexes, two-thirds single-family. But we have not made that decision specifically, but it'd be all residential.
All right. So what I'd like to do first is invite anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this rezoning request to come forward and have a chance to comment. All right. So anyone who would like to speak against this rezoning request can please come forward. Just ask that you state your name, your address, and keep it to three minutes. If it starts getting a little stretched out, I'll give a 30-second warning. And welcome to come forward as you just look around and figure out who's coming first,
My name is Slaton Harp. I live at 288 Armsworthy Road. Thank y'all for giving me an opportunity to speak. My property is south of this subject property that you're discussing this evening, directly south, if you're looking at the borders. And we bought this property in 2003 and knew that there was a very good possibility that it is set up for residential development from the day we acquired it. However, I am not sure if this is consistent with what we were expecting nor consistent with what the plan that was just approved as part of the overall plan for 2000, it was, went into effect January 1, I forget what y'all call that right now, for the county comprehensive plan. Because if I understood, and at least looking at the application, Mr. Meadwell, where you spoke that it is highway business, commercial use, mixed use, CMU, correct? There is a portion that it's R20, I believe, which is what the original designation was prior to the plan of the overall comprehensive plan. I question, R12 is a lot more dense than what anything else we've seen typically outside of a inner-town, town-limits type environment. I do understand there's sewer, and I understand that's the need for that square footage of a potential lot. But I would think that the comprehensive plan should be our standard, not a deviation only 14 months into when it's been approved for a 20-year purpose. I guess the other thing that, as looking at this application, with things that come to mind, being on the property line immediately becomes to mind is what are the water issues that are coming off this property? Our question is, the Board, do you have enough information to make a decision on that yet? I know there's a lot of things that would have to be, come through the Planning and Zoning Department before that would be granted, but when you look at the terrain of that property, it drops to me, there is a creek on the backside of that property, there's a little branch that runs between my home and the front of our property, and there has already been drainage issues off of this pasture area there that we've had to clean up a few times. So I think there's some concerns that I would have there. I'd like to see what the plat and the plan are going to look like. I mean, I think there's a lot of questions to be asked, what this, what this structure's going to look like, and beyond that, I think looking at the application, there's a lot of things that have been changed and marked out. So I'm not sure what the intent, were we going for R8, which was on here at one point, and there's also another section that's been marked out? So I'm not sure if the single-family residential- So I'm not sure if the single-family residential covers everything Trent's speaking to, or if that was a later adjustment, and did he make that adjustment, or was he recommended to make that adjustment? I applaud you guys serving on the board, and thank you for your efforts. Please take a lot of due diligence as you go through this process, and understand what you're voting for, because I'm not sure from this application, I'm very clear exactly what we're getting.
Thank you.
My name's Libby Cook, and I live in Redlin Way. And I don't have all the statistics that everybody else has. I've just got a few bits of information. Now, my property is about, excuse me, my property is about point seventy-six acres. And I also, twelve, about twelve-and-a-half acres across the street from where he's wanting to develop all these homes. Now, I did call this number, the development and facilities services number, and what was explained to me was an R-20 is thirty thousand square foot. And they're wanting to rezonate to an R-12, which is eight thousand square foot. I did a little bit of arithmetic. Based on what this gentleman is requesting, it can put up to two-hundred-and-fifteen homes on this acreage. Now, we don't have sewer there, so I guess he's going to have to come in and figure out how he's going to put sewer. But like the gentleman before me, I'm concerned about runoff. Because if he can, if his idea is to put this many homes there, we're going to have some runoff problems. I mean, everybody already knows that Kinderton, the Bermuda Run, and Oak Valley is having flooding issues. So once you start putting all these properties up, you're going to have a lot of pavement and a lot of asphalt. So where's the water going to go? And my also concern is, if he wants to put that many homes and buildings on that property, how's it going to affect the other neighbors? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance.
Mr. Chairman, Board, my name is Wayne Webb, eighteen forty-eight Highway 801 North I'm in the construction industry as well as Mr. Trent. We do a lot of homes each year, and so I'm sort of stabbing, cutting off my, no spite my face. Anyway, the issue that I have with this development is Highway 158 is already extremely overcrowded. I have people in my employ that try to get out on Highway 158 from Webb Way every day, twice a day. They can't get in, they can't get out, depending on the direction and the time of the day, and usually the time of the day is all day. The state, I know you don't have any decision-making process as far as the highways go. But as we all know, the state is already planning to make an access from Baltimore to Interstate 40. We also know the state is getting ready to widen 158 from 801 to Baltimore Road. I think it would be prudent of this board to table this motion until such time as development starts on those two, either one of those two projects. That will alleviate the traffic that is already a nightmare. You cannot get in and out of Highway 158 from Baltimore Road to 801 and through that intersection any time of the day, especially when Ashley is changing shifts, and it just doesn't work. But you do have the ability not to control the streets, but to delay this project until such time as we're going to have sufficient traffic control in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
First of all, I'm not a public speaker, and I talk slow, and I've tried my best to talk fast and make this three minutes.
All right.
I have my ninety-two-year-old mother time me. So if you'll just bear with me, give me about thirty seconds extra, I'm going to read it to you.
All right.
What's your name, hon?
My name is Cindy Wilson, and although I don't adjoin any of this property, my mother's an Armsworthy. My cousins out here all live next to it, my brother owns the property across the road from it, my grandparents' house is going to butt up against it, and it's going to be a nightmare, the way it's sitting right now. He has no concrete plans. The man has just told you, I might do this, and I might do that. How can you vote on that? I couldn't. You've got to have facts. And one member being thanked for another development, to me, kind of displays a conflict of interest. That's all pre-written comments, but I'll go from there, if you'll let me read it. Even though we're all going to miss having the beautiful farmland, which once had cattle and recently has had hay on it, and look at and enjoy, no one is here to argue the right to build houses on that forty-three acres within the designated guidelines of the R-20 zoning it now has. We'll hope the homes will be quality-built with beautiful yards and landscaping, and their minimum three hundred, thirty thousand square feet lots with approved septic tank systems that their lot size is allowed. However, R-12 zoning allows for five houses per acre on eight thousand square-foot lots, basically an eyesore, cracker box, side-by-side housing development, a frame-and-brick trailer park, if you will. Seldom are occupied by long-term owners who settle down and become involved in their communities. They're usually transient, as in Redlin Way and Kinderton, staying only until they can move on to an area with R-20 zoning, meaning more land to garden, have some semblance of the privacy that the people around this lot now have. R-12 is described as residential suburban. What, pray tell, is that cow pasture a suburb of? Andy's Country Store, or Duck's Gambling Establishment up the road? It's certainly not a suburb of Bermuda Run, two miles away, with all the residential property between the two, no matter how much you wish it to be. For R-12 to be approved, there would have to be county water and county sewer in place, county being the key word here. At the present time, there is no county-wide water and sewer system in place. And y'all may object to the county-wide water part. Having lived here thirty-four years and seen my neighbors pay privately for the last two-thousand feet to get county water to our houses last year, we weren't. As a matter of fact, the whole county already pays for the privilege of sewer service to the few who live on the eastern border of the county from 801 to the river. We're even having to pay for the latest expansion of the system to accommodate the unrestrained building in that area, yet we don't have the option of benefiting from it. The taxpayers and residents of this county have paid their taxes year after year to have that infrastructure in place for all. Yet here you are, considering a rezoning plan that could allow, that could allow for two-hundred homes with the plan of extending a sewer line to this development for the benefit of one individual's profits. There've been a few examples of this spot sewage privilege in the past, Shalifer Road for one. How does one side of the street deserve sewer and the other side doesn't? This is spot zoning at its worst, surrounded by R-20 zoning, and a direct violation of the 2019 Davie County Strategic Plan, which states that they should preserve the rural character of Davie County. Suburban zoning at its very definition does not accomplish that goal.
Thank, thank you.
I'm not done yet.
We really need to stick to this. It's become a problem. But we get your point. We understand your point. You've been heard.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I need a stopwatch on or anything like that. Anyway, my name's Brent Shove, forty-six zero one U.S. Highway 158. Had the blessing of being able to live in a nice neighborhood for the last twenty-three years approximately, with some very good people in the neighborhood. One of the things I want to point out is that, be very clear, this is not personal with Tim, Jerry. I don't really know Jerry, but I think people ought to be able to do, within reason, what they want to do with their land. But an R-20 development is appropriate for our area, not an R-12. Just visualize with me momentarily, how many of you here have ever been to a baseball game, like to see the Dash, to see your kids play in high school? Well, I'm somebody that likes to visualize things. A baseball diamond, it's ninety feet to first base, ninety to second, ninety to third, and ninety to home. That's eighty-one hundred square feet. This is what we're talking about, popping a house out in the middle of a baseball diamond, allowing for lots and lots of green space. If you put five of them in an acre, man, you're going to have three thousand five-hundred-and-sixty feet, three thousand five-hundred-and-sixty feet of green space for those houses jammed on to an acre. I think these need to keep in mind, how does this comply when we've only got developments like this in an area like Kinderton, that it's the core of a business area? I scratch my head sometimes, because I've been a department head for twenty years as Register of Deeds, and saw how we struggle and struggle to make ends meet and pay for the services of Davie County. Right now, it costs approximately nineteen hundred dollars for the county's contribution to educate a child per year. Certainly, out of these one-hundred-and-nine units, we're going to have some children. A three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, three-hundred-thousand-dollar house provides twenty-two-hundred-and-forty-one dollars tax revenue. That's not counting all the other services you get. I don't want Davie County to close down and not allow other people to enter, but I think it would be wise, since we really don't know, all we see in this application is a sheet of paper that's got forty-three acres, and we really don't know how many houses, or even if we get a hundred-and-nine houses, what it's really going to look like. Are there going to be nicer homes? Are there going to be homes that are scaled down? We don't know. It could impact our property values negatively, and people go, how's that? Well, if you only own five, six acres, you've got to put a lot of pieces of puzzle together if you want to sell your land. So I would ask you to, right now, provide us with more detail on what is going to be put on this property. And I would think, as Mr. Wayne Webb said, I think it would seriously need to be considered being tabled. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name's Amber Bostick. I live on Davie Academy Road. I'm going to finish reading hers, and then I have a few questions of my own. If we add this housing development, it has the potential to add four-hundred-plus cars daily onto an already overloaded, dangerous intersection highway, five-hundred-plus children to an already overcrowded school population, and we know it, we know we don't want to pay to build another school to pay for Ellis and Cronancer. Had to be built because Oak Valley was an old farm rezoned into a development that wouldn't be promoted as a family neighborhood and wouldn't have that many children. We just don't have the infrastructure in place to suspend, to support this development. If you want to plan for this kind of construction now and in the future, since you are the planning board, start planning now to build a county-wide water and sewer system that benefits all of us whose families date back one to two-hundred years here, who have paid for one development after another to receive services we can't get. You should stop right here and right now with approving these mega developments that benefit of very few individuals until that is done. In the meantime, in the meantime, unless you can, unless you stand to benefit from this development in each of your professions as builders, surveyors, and realtors, the logical and right thing to do at this point is to leave this lovely land, lovely old pasture zoned R-20, and let this developer build what he can within the existing zoning if that designation with no many, with as many houses on that forty-three acres as approved septic tank systems will allow and no more. I've also, I don't, my grandma has, is from that area, I'm not. My mother grew up there, so I am to one day inherit land up there, land that me and my brother love. Me and my brother planned to keep farm. So as a young person, you still have people in this county that want to see that agriculture grow and want to keep it going. And I've been told there's a total of seventy-some acres. We've all talked about the forty-three, what's happening with the other thirty would be our questions. We have land that backs up to that, we have pastures that back up to that, you're going to have cows, coyotes, you're going to have wildlife running through there. Is that something, is this a place where we want to take, where we want to put something like that? So just as, as a young person who loves agriculture, loves to see the county grow, because I have two small children myself, I want them to thrive in Davie County. But there's also other things that could be done with the land, or to keep it the R-20, where there's not as many houses on one acre. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others? Okay. We will close the public comment portion. So, discussion among ourselves, questions for the applicant, anything? Mr. Adams, would you mind coming back up, please? It's just a quick question, but I hate to have you not be able to be heard. It may turn into another question and another question. I know you don't have any specific plans, but when I think of Kinderton, and I know that some of those lots are, you know, small like these, would you foresee and plan to build the same type of product? We're talking curb and gutter, sidewalks, street trees?
So, like we said, we want to build a neighborhood and understand everything everybody says. We've got to control erosion, so that's kind of a moot point. We will, we've designed it a couple, three different ways. Like I said, one is single-family that has a hundred-and-nine, and then one that has sixty-five single-family and eighteen twin homes. So that's the maximum we're going to do. We think we can get to sewer. We think we have county water. And we, I think the houses that they're doing currently, the last phase of Kinderton, is very similar, which are three-hundred-thousand-dollar houses. And I would argue, Kinderton, you have four-hundred houses, you probably have eighty to a hundred million dollars worth of stuff into the county, which I do think benefits the county, but ultimately, it's y'all's decision.
You said one plan was a hundred-and-nine?
Hundred-and-nine, single-family.
And the other?
Was sixty-five, sixty-seven? Single-family and eighteen twin homes.
Eighteen being thirty-six units? Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
I have one, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So you are going to be able to get sewer and water? Is that your intent?
Yes, we would pump it, and we'd have to go above the Ashley plant on 158, because we can't tie into the Ashley.
So that's where it's coming from, up 158, right there?
On Baltimore 158.
Okay.
Without sewer, it really doesn't work?
No, without sewer.
You can't do R-12, is what I'm saying.
Of course, no, no, ma'am. And there's plenty of green space, because somebody said in here there could potentially be four-hundred units. So we're going to do a quarter of that, basically.
So you're not going to build a two-hundred and whatever?
No, Lord, no. We're either a hundred-and-nine, or, and I'm not sixty-five, sixty-seven, he's not the engineer, he's surveyor, but, and then the eighteen duplexes. So we're a hundred-and-five, a hundred-and-nine. So three-quarters of it, if potentially we can get four-hundred and some lots, three-quarters will be open space, or roads, or sidewalks, or street trees, or whatever.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. All right, folks. Any discussion here? All right, folks. Any discussion here?
So we're only talking about the forty-three acres, not the, I mean, no, excuse me, the, not the other tract of land that they, that folks own? Not the other portion of the eighty-seven, right? We're only talking about the forty-three acres, forty-two point three-six of the seventy-five. So the others, what are the differences between that? That's not being considered right now? It's not on the table, is what I'm saying.
That's not, that's not before you, it's not.
Okay.
Can I ask a question just about the whole sewer thing?
Really, really, we've closed the public comment portion. We'll try to fill in a couple blanks, and it's not really a question and answer. But I'll just tell you that, I mean, he just confirmed, without sewer, it doesn't work. You can't build a subdivision like that without sewer. That's gonna take time, the engineers to figure out, the county to figure out. We won't decide that here tonight. It's a consideration for us. Takes time, takes planning. This is not something, if we approve this tonight, there's gonna be houses out there in six months. It can't happen. So, I don't know if that answered your question, but I don't know how else to, uh...
I believe it's locate, Ashley Furniture has some sewer near it, is all I know. I don't know exactly.
The question was, would it be, would it come by Grandma's land, or would it come down Baltimore? And then down one fifty-eight?
It'd come down one fifty-eight.
Well, Ashley's on Baltimore. So would it come down Baltimore and then down one fifty-eight?
Comes down one fifty-eight and then on.
Okay, all right.
I think the real question might be, how do we know going into this? How are we prepared and deep that we can dig sewer? Because somebody, before they did this, would have prior knowledge that they could dig sewer. Thank you.
All right. We may or may not discuss anymore here. It's getting close to time to make a motion. But if I can just ask everyone to let us finish our business here. Thank you. Okay. You wanna make a motion one way or the other?
I would like to add a comment, please.
Okay.
The, the board does not take into consideration the use of the property. We're just looking at a general rezoning and what could happen in that R-12 district, regardless of what the applicant's planning to do. So if we rezon this property and Mr. Adams decides, well, that's not gonna be feasible for him, we have a piece of property there that's zoned R-12 and can be used for whatever R-12 is allowed. So that's just something that, you know, regardless of what he's planning to do, we have to look at the zoning of the piece of property. Regarding runoff, we have no control over that as a board. That's a state thing. You know, anything environmental, we don't have any control over that. We are only looking at a rezoning and making sure that it applies with, it applies with the plan and the paperwork that is in front of us. We're looking at a primary growth area. We're looking at a possibility, or it's a possibility, it's gonna happen, the road going over to I-40. We're looking at all these things, and this is an area that's gonna grow. Regardless of whether we want it to or not, it's gonna grow. So, you know, that's just the facts of life, and, you know, and I'm sorry. But that's just how I feel.
Okay. All good points.
And I think to clarify further, what Wendy said earlier is that this is only the forty-three acres, correct? So it's already commercial mixed-use. It is not R-20 converting to R-12.
Oh, it is R-20. The commercial mixed-use is on the land development.
Is on the land development plan. Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, future, future use, right.
To clarify, that's what I was referring to.
And in our, in the commercial mixed-use, they can do higher-density building or whatever, correct? It's not that yet, but that's what the land use plan shows for, right? Okay.
There's another question to me, Ellen.
Yeah?
Yeah. So, so you do have the commercial mixed-use, and then you have the residential mixed-use on the further, on the second, on the bottom section of the... Obviously, the commercial mixed-use is more of the commercial-type, like uses, but the higher residential density. But the residential mixed-use is more residential and the higher-density residential as well. So regardless of the CNU mixed-use or the residential mixed-use, they both fit in with the higher-density residential type use that's being requested here.
Now, with all that being said, I knew that we approved the R-12 rezoning.
Okay. We have a motion to approve.
May I get the following statement to be adopted in support of a motion to approve? The amendment promotes public health safety and general welfare is consistent with all applicable adopted plans and considers the action to be reasonable and in the public interest, and that said, approval furthers the goals, objectives, actions, and policies of the land development plan and the growth enhancement strategy because it is in harmony with the surrounding residential area and uses and promotes increased density on lot service by public utilities.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second? I will second the motion to approve, and I'll just add, if we're gonna have some comments here. I think we have a developer who's experienced, who has products that we can see in Kinderton with regard to runoff issues. These are things that are taken care of much later, that are approved by the state that are engineered to control the runoff, to treat the runoff before it's released back off of the property. With regard to density and tax values, we just have to accept that it's coming. I don't see a huge difference in, in, in what the density would make with regard to traffic. Of course, DOT controls what will be approved coming out on the one fifty-eight. Mr. Webb made a good point that all that's gonna be widened. This development's gonna take time. It's gonna take time to figure out this sanitary sewer. May not be able to get it done. May not work. Engineering may not work. The cost may not work. May all fall flat. But I'm for it. Any other comments? All right. We will call for a vote. All in favor of approving the rezoning as written, raise your right hand. All right, two. And all opposed? Four. Okay, thank you. All right. That's how it's supposed to work.
But ultimately, the commissioners decide, correct?
Yeah, this is just a recommendation.
It goes to the commissioners now, guys. So they get to decide, not us.
Mr. Ridwell, the next order of business. You wanna lead us into that?
Yeah. Mr. Trump, just wanted to kind of give the board an update of where we were with the sewer. As many of you know, the board commissioners at its last meeting did approve a more tolerant on any new sewer projects to be reviewed or approved or denied for the county. The other thing that staff has been working with is the county has went into contracts with a consultant to help us look at our current ordinance, as well as help the county in developing new language to modify or change our ordinance. So we're expecting probably to have some language, probably some draft language maybe, to the board sometime in April, if I can maybe. Not so much to discuss, but just for you to review, to just to gather your thoughts on. Hopefully, we'll have something to you by either May or June. Yeah, so, so it'd be up to the board commissioners, really. So, you know, they will probably take this draft and then they'll take it through the board that you look at this new language, make changes to it, review it, and then send it back to them for consideration. Based on the recommendations. And more likely, the consultant, more likely to come and meet with staff. I know we'll come meet with staff, but more likely to come meet with, with the board.
Andrew, I heard about half of what you said.
We had a hard time here.
We still have a meeting going on, so if you guys want to talk, please go outside so we can hear what's going on in here. Thank you. So you said we would have some language by May?
Hopefully, we can have something by May.
Okay. I guess that's true.
And we'll follow our normal process that we do with any type of ordinance amendment. You know, we always send it to you guys to look at first, gather your thoughts on, and then a month, two months later, we'll actually take a formal presentation to you for deliberation and either a recommendation to the board commissioners for, for... So you may look at it three months forward.
Can you speak up, Amy? I can't hear you.
You're basically saying we had a failed motion to approve. If they really close it out, we need a motion to deny?
That's great, yeah.
And a vote, a positive vote on that?
Yeah, if we could, and I wasn't very clear on what that vote was. I couldn't see everyone's hands.
It was two, four, and four against.
To fail the... So, so right now, the motion was to...
The motion to approve was to...
To four.
Four, to four against.
So, yeah, I think the board would need to follow through with a formal motion.
Miriam has made a motion to deny.
No, to defer.
To defer.
To defer. Thank you.
I don't understand a lot of the questions, and I, at the risk of it, I'm sorry to labor our agenda that's long-term coming up. But there's a lot I don't understand, and I'd like to understand it more thoroughly before we go forward. So I would like to make a motion to defer, so at least I can get those questions answered and make a better, more informed decision.
Right. I think the developer needs to have more concrete information.
All right. So, well, we have a motion to defer.
I have a second.
And a second. Any other discussion on the motion to defer? None. All right. All in favor of supporting a motion to defer, raise your right hand. Now we have five against to one. Thanks for the point. We are deferring the amendment for additional consideration.
We're, we were still conducting business.
Yeah, we, we, the motion to approve the rezoning did not pass. Then, there was a motion to defer, and it passed. So the whole thing has been deferred.
Because we did not have enough information about what they planned to do there.
Okay, so you'll have another meeting on the...
Correct.
But when we were all in here, you said oh, two, four, and you said it's going to deny.
We are still carrying on the meeting. I'm sorry to be rude, but we have to conduct our business, and public comment is over. Thank you very much.
I'm moving adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second. I'll advance my...
We are adjourned.